Welcome to St. Pete Decides 2013 City Council Candidate Forum. Live from City Council Chambers on St. Pete TV. Brought to you by the University of South Florida, St. Petersburg.
Good evening, and welcome to St. Pete Decides 2013. I am your moderator Frank Biophora, Dean of the College of Arts and Sciences at the University of South Florida, St. Petersburg. Tonight, we have a chance to hear from the top two candidates running for each of the four open city council seats right here in the chambers of City Hall. The exact location where each hopes to serve. The candidates are seated alphabetically in district order, from left to right. In District Two, we have our incumbent Jim Kennedy and his challenger, Lorraine Margeson. In District Four, we have Carolyn Fries and Darden Rice. In District Six, we have the incumbent Carl Nurse and his challenger Sharon Russ. In District Eight, we have Amy Foster and Steve Galvin. This forum is being brought to you tonight live on St. Pete Television, and here are the rules of engagement. Candidates tonight will have 60 seconds to respond to a series of issue questions, and each candidate will be given opportunities to answer first. With the exception of the opening question, and a light extra credit bonus question at the end, which will be asked of all candidates, all issue questions will be targeted to district pairs. This permits candidates running against one another for a district seat an opportunity to discuss and to debate on single topics of importance to their constituents. To provide greater flexibility for involvement, each candidate has the opportunity tonight to rebut an opponent, and also, each candidate has wildcard opportunities to address a topic being debated by another district pair. And to help us keep track of these two options, each candidate has now been given two 30-second rebuttal cards and two 30-second wild cards that can be used at any time. Finally, each candidate will have 60 seconds to offer their closing comments. All questions for tonight's forum were solicited from students and employees from the University of South Florida, St. Petersburg, and also from audience members here this evening. With that, let's get started. Question number one will be asked of all of the candidates. This first question is designed to help the voters to get a clearer understanding of some of the central issues and the unique personality of your respective districts. So the question here is twofold. Would you please list for us what are some of the key issues that tend to be more or less district-centric in your view? And second, could you highlight some of the interesting features and characteristics that tend to define your district's unique personality? And we'll begin with District Two. And to remind our audience, District Two runs from north to south, from this side of the Howard Franklin Bridge to 52nd Avenue North, and from west to east, running from 26th Street to the Gandy Bridge, inclusive of the Whedon Island Reserve area. With that, Jim Kennedy, please.
Thank you. And first, I'd like to thank USF St. Petersburg for hosting. And District Two is our northernmost district. It's very diverse. We have Whedon Island in District Two, which has a great preserve, and we also have Carol Lawn, which is one of the biggest business centers south of Atlanta. We also obviously have great residential areas. From one of the key issues, four years ago, that would have been pretty easy. District Two needed a park. Right now, that key issue has been resolved in that we're going to have a brand-new eight-and-a-half-acre park at the site of Rio Vista School, which is down on 83rd. And that was going to fill a need that District Two had, where we did not have tennis courts, we did not have basketball courts, and this will have an exercise facility, it will have a big playground. And we had our groundbreaking last week, and we expect to have the ribbon-cutting at the end of March and the beginning of April.
Thank you very much, Lorraine Margeson.
Yes, District Two, the folks there really enjoy the quietude and some of the bigger parcels of the properties that are in that area of the city, and kind of a lot of less traffic, so that's kind of one of the attractions of the District Two area. I think that our district will realize soon that one of the biggest issues that will be on their plate is the bigger waters flood insurance issue. So although I'd say it's a fairly happy district, although, as you hear all over the city, we sure would like more attention than downtown usually gets in terms of financial aid, I think we'll all soon discover that that is one of the districts that's going to have to really face the bigger waters flood insurance disaster coming our way.
Thank you. Let's move on now to District Four. And to remind our audience, District Four runs from north to south, from 77th Avenue North to 5th Avenue North, and from west to east, from I-275 to the Bay, inclusive of Coffee Pot Bayou. We'll begin first with Carolyn Fries.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Fries, running in District Four, and I've been a resident of District Four for 23 years, where I've been raising my family. One thing that's very exciting about our district are the business corridors, in particular along 4th, 9th, and even 16th Streets as well, and also 62nd Avenue North, a portion of that. We also have a very diverse background of residential areas, ranging from, you know, very expensive homes in the old northeast, and then lower-priced homes in the Haynes Road area, so a lot of diversity along those lines. We have a fair amount of waterfront areas in ours. In my neighborhood Crescent Lake, we have the historic Water Tower, and also the Huggins-Stengel Baseball Field, where long ago Babe Ruth used to play spring baseball. Some of the issues that we're seeing in the area, in particular along the waterfront, a lot of the issues with the state and the submerged lands, who owns those, I've had several people contact me about that. So I would say that those are the main things going on in our district.
Thank you. Darden Rice.
Hi, I'm Darden Rice, and thank you for holding the forum tonight. It's great to be here. District Four has just really got some great amenities, great neighborhood amenities, natural and cultural amenities, and some of my favorites are, for example, the historic Old Northeast is a neighborhood that's recognized nationally as an interesting historical neighborhood. The natural amenities include Crescent Lake Park, and we have one of the oldest intact dugout canoes that was excavated from the lake years ago, and I believe it's on display at the St. Pete Museum of History. And we also have a great cultural history, and Sunken Gardens is in the heart of our district. And Sunken Gardens was one of the biggest roadside attractions in old Florida years ago. You couldn't even drive down a major highway in our state without seeing one of the billboards to see Sunken Gardens, and I'm glad that the city owns it and is taking such good care of it. It's part of our heritage that I'm proud, as in my district, and I'm proud to brag about it a little bit.
Thank you very much. Moving now to District Six. To remind our audience, District Six runs from north to south, from 9th Avenue North all the way south to the southeastern tip of Pinellas Point Drive, and from west to east, running from 22nd Street to the Bay. Beginning first with Carl Nurse.
District Six is the city's most diverse district, running from downtown, and the issues downtown really are how do we manage development, redevelopment, make it a lively downtown while it's still possible to sleep at some point, because we have several thousand people who live downtown. Then you go to Midtown, which has our, and the portion that I have, has the highest concentration of housing that is in bad shape, and a highest concentration of foreclosures, boarded-up houses, poverty, unemployment. And so those tough issues are the core of the issues I end up having to deal with there. Along the southern waterfront, flood insurance, and what that's going to do is the new and candidly most important issue. And finally, I should finally say that the other issue along the waterfront is the lack of retail that we have all through the south side of St. Petersburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Russ.
My district is District Six, and some of the amenities that the majority of our city enjoy is absent in District Six. District Six has been redrawn. At one time, the history of District Six, it was a minority in the majority district, according to our charter and according to our constitution. Right now, we have Midtown in the middle of District Six, and we have Downtown, and there's a great difference between Midtown and Downtown. I think it's the only district that has a designated area called Midtown, where there's joblessness. We have the three or four failing middle schools, our elementary schools are drastically failing, and we have the highest school-to-prison pipeline, I would think, in the city. So that's, to sum it up, is some of the characteristics of District Six.
Thank you. Moving now finally to District Eight. And to remind our audience, District Eight runs from north to south, from the 40th Avenue North, south to Central Avenue, and from west to east, from Tyrone Boulevard to roughly I-275. Amy Foster, please.
Great, thank you everybody for being here. I'm Amy Foster, and in District Eight, starting on the south end of the district, there's really a great gem to live, work, and play. The Grand Central Association has great arts where the arts are being sold. There's also retail and eateries, and there's really been a revitalization happening there over the last couple of years. I live in Historic Kenwood, where I've lived for 11 years and raised my daughter there, my stepdaughter. The further north you go, the district becomes more diverse. There's less sidewalks, less community cohesiveness. There's also less services in District Eight than in some of the other districts, such as libraries and recreation centers. Still a great place to live. Out west, in distant heights, they have some larger properties. Some of the issues that are being faced out in distant heights includes code enforcement, and then across the entire district, many of our constituents have called 34th Street the unsightly zipper in our seamless city. Serious issues there.
Thank you. Steve Galvin.
District Eight has a very diverse demographic. We've got some strong and some very historic neighborhoods and neighborhood associations, but our issue area really is 34th Street. We've got issues with crime, prostitution, drug dealing, and a shortage of limited, of quality retail along there. But we have a great opportunity on 22nd Avenue North. One of the things that I would like to do on City Council is have 22nd Avenue North identified as its own retail district, the Home Renovation Row, which they've been trying to put together, and I think it would create an identity and a destination shopping area for people who are doing home renovations and remodeling, and that's one of the things that I would like to get on the agenda on council.
Thank you all. Moving now to the issue questions, and these are district-centric questions. District Two, and this goes to Lorraine Margeson first. The topic is emergency first responders and transport services. In times of budget reductions, it is not at all surprising that the topic of conversation often moves toward finding efficiencies through partnerships. Some have argued that partnering with the county on emergency first responders may well be worth exploring. Can you help us to understand the core issues at hand, as you understand them, and is partnering with the county on EMS something that you plan to invest political capital?
I've actually been not only supportive of exploring that, but also of policing, actually. I think in the end, as time moves forward, the county will become, or have to become, more unified surfaces-centric. I know I don't think that's going to happen tomorrow, but it's been looked at. When I lived in another district years and years and years ago, District Eight, actually, we were already looking at that kind, those kinds of options as well, because, yes, eliminating the duplication and different city, you know, systems and making it one unified system, I think is where we will go eventually, and I think it's always worth periodically looking at, to do a county unification of those kinds of services.
Thank you. Jim Kennedy.
Thank you. I currently sit as the Chair of the EMS Committee, and to fully understand the EMS issue, you have to go back to a 1989 court order. The city and county did have a dispute, and it's been kind of bubbling the last three years or so. And during this time, I provided the city leadership in that we put together a book between city staff and county staff as to our agreements and our disagreements. And we wound up sitting down, when I was Chair of City Council, with our full city council and the full county commission, and discussing those issues. Some of the real concerns were the expectation, our people get there in 4 minutes and 30 seconds. There was a concern that we had excess response time, that 7 minutes and 30 seconds would be acceptable, that we were too expensive. Basically, we've protected our response time, we've protected that our guys are going to come and get you, it's not going to be paramedics plus, and I believe we've been very successful on that issue.
Thank you. Moving now to District Four, this question goes to Darden Rice. The topic is follow the money. In a recent debate, I heard one of the candidates running for mayor say that you can tell a lot about a city's priorities by analyzing its budget. What does our city's budget currently say about our city's priorities?
Well, 2/3 of our operating budget goes to public safety, so it's pretty clear that the majority of our, that our main values reflected in the budget document goes to our fighter fighters and police. 2/3 of what goes to public safety, it's about 110 million, and about 2/3 of that are the wages, and 1/3 of that is the benefits.
Thank you. Carolyn Fries.
That's exactly what I was going to say, that public safety is clearly the most high priority within the budget here in the city, as it should be.
Thank you. Moving on now to District Six, this question goes to Sharon Russ. The topic is breaking the cycle of poverty. Sharon Russ was recently quoted in the papers, The Tribune to be exact, as saying that the city council should pay more attention to some of the key issues facing south St. Pete, such as deteriorated housing, teen pregnancy, street violence, and other related issues that contribute to a continued cycle of poverty for too many. What bold ideas can you think of that may help to turn the tide on this vicious cycle?
Well, my idea is to give that community back to the people. I think we can open up the dialogue. Right now, I'm volunteering at John Hopkins Middle School, and I have two young ladies that I'm mentoring, and there is a young man who is a community ally, he's on there, and he's doing a wonderful job. I'm just disappointed that he only has 20 hours a week, but I think if we give that community back and target the young people there who are very positive, and we have a lot of them in our community, I think we make a mistake whenever we use gatekeepers in our community, and we don't go to the community to basically ask what they want and come up with ways that we can actually solve issues instead of this continual cycle of throwing money at a situation, because as a city, we've invested, given a lot of money into programs, and those programs have not worked. And I think it's time that we sit down and seriously consider how, as a city, what we can do to make sure that this cycle is broken, and it starts with our young children right now from elementary school. It's the most important. When they come to school, they need to be prepared.
Thank you. Carl Nurse.
Poverty is our greatest challenge in St. Petersburg. I've been happy to have been part of the Agenda 2020 planning process, which is aimed at providing a comprehensive plan to deal with poverty. Let me mention a couple of parts that I think are critical. One, led really by the Juvenile Welfare Board, we are trying to change the pre-K, essentially what you and I would think of as daycare centers, and convert them into preschools. I think that's a critical element of it. We also frankly need to do a much better job at trying to attract jobs to Midtown, because the quickest way to end poverty is a decent job. And the final thing I would say is that because we have the highest concentration of poor housing, both housing that was poor when it was built and hasn't gotten better, that we need to ramp up the efforts to renovate housing, which is also a job creator.
Thank you. Moving on now to District Eight, and this goes to Steve, okay, we have a wildcard. Amy Foster.
I just want to build a little bit on what Carl Nurse just said. I think it's of the utmost importance that we start with early childhood education. If a child, by the time they reach the age of three, they're missing 30 million words in their vocabulary if their parents haven't read and spoken to them enough, so they're way behind when they start in school. In addition to that, there is the need for wraparound social support, like partnering with other nonprofits and social service agencies to engage families in community activities.
We have another wildcard. Carolyn Fries.
I want to focus on three areas. One, family, one, education and training, and the third one being jobs. In particular, with family and parents being active with their children in the school system, I was told that one of the issues with parents volunteering in the school system is that a lot of times, if you have had a record, you are not able to volunteer. So being able to work with the schools such that parents can get involved in their children's education in spite of their potential past, because we want parents to be involved, we're trying to keep bad people away from hurting the children, but we want the parents to be able to help their own kids.
Thank you. Moving on to District Eight, Steve Galvin, you begin. The title here is Business Development and Jobs. District Eight has several concentrated areas of industrial parks with jobs that serve as the backbone of our city. What specific ideas do you have to expand job creation in your district?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, 22nd Avenue North. I think it's an area that's ripe for revitalization. The retailers that are there are anxious to move forward with this. They've brought the idea to the mayor, who has done nothing with it. I've spoken with most of the retailers in the area. Now that we've had the Brownfield designation of the one large lot on 22nd Avenue North, that's ready for development. There's a contractor ready to put a development in there, and if we can create a cohesive retail corridor there, like we have in Grand Central, for example, with unique signage and create an identity there, it would bring a tremendous amount of jobs and positive focus in our district.
Thank you. Amy Foster.
You know, I think that the real potential is just south of District Eight in the Dome Industrial Park, bringing clean technology jobs that are high-wage jobs that we can bring to our city. Some of the partnerships that are already happening in that area, like LumaStream and the St. Pete College, those are the types of things I want to focus on, is more growing a technology cluster sector around Jabil and other things in that area.
Thank you. We have a wildcard from Carl Nurse.
If I could just add a couple of things, frankly, Amy's on point there, but probably our greatest near-term job opportunity is in medical research, and it's really in John Hopkins. They've, you know, they've bought All Children's Hospital, they're about to build a center to train doctors, but they are the largest recipient of medical research dollars in the country. And I think our first and immediate priority needs to be to try to bring those jobs here, because a medical research facility has jobs from physicians to the people who have to build the building.
Thank you. Darden Rice has a wildcard.
I would also like to build on that, that I think that we especially need to focus on the medical sector, and as part of that, we also need to make sure that we are offering the vocational opportunities so that young people and people entering a new career can have the opportunity to get vocational training in two to four years. That would enable them to get some of the many jobs available in the medical sector, not just necessarily the high-paying M.D.-level, research-level jobs, but the whole slew of jobs that will be available, that provide a very decent wage.
Thank you. Another wildcard from Carolyn Fries.
There's actually a manufacturing company that's not Jabil here in St. Petersburg that I recently learned is expanding in the southeast, and I have made contact with the Department of Economic Development here within the city to have them contact that company and talk about them being in St. Pete, because they already have a small facility here, so it makes sense for them to expand where they already exist.
Thank you. Jim Kennedy also has a wildcard on this one.
Well, in building on jobs, I'll connect a little transportation into that, because if you're going to have employment and you're going to have employers, you're going to need to have a way for people to get back and forth from work. This would be helpful to Midtown and to all of our city, and that's why Greenlight Pinellas is an important thing to be aware of. I sit as the Chair on the Pinellas Planning Council, and I've been appointed to the ACPT, the Advisory Committee on Pinellas Transportation, and one of my main objectives is to assist with Greenlight Pinellas. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, you may wish that you did not use your wildcard on that one, because the question comes to you, and the topic is mass transit.
But I can talk about mass transit for much more than just one minute.
Okay, so what are the pieces of this complex puzzle that must come together for mass transit, whether it's light rail or expanded bus services, to be viable and used by residents in your district? And is this an issue that we continue to kick the can down the road or to address right now?
We're going to address it right now, and now's the time for us to cross the goal line on it. What people will have an opportunity to vote on in November of 2014 is an exchange of the ad valorem property tax, which currently supports PSTA, in exchange for a one-cent sales tax. One of the nice things about a one-cent sales tax is about 1/3 of it is paid for by tourists. The plan does have light rail from Clearwater to St. Petersburg with 16 stops, but light rail is only about 25% of the plan. The other 75% of the plan is bus rapid transit. It's going to, because this has to also work for North County, this is a full county-wide referendum, but it'll change us from a hub system to a grid system that will help us with Williams Park Downtown, but basically, the transportation, and I've got two seconds, so go to greenlightpinellas.com, get educated on it, get involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lorraine Margeson.
Yes, and just to expand on that, what the ad valorem tax, which to the sales tax, will produce, currently it's $30 million that the PSTA has, that'll jump to 130 million, which will also give them the ability to expand the bus timeframes so that when people are getting out of bars, or getting out of Tropicana Field, or getting out of wherever they get out of later in the evening, they can actually find a bus, which is not the case now. Also, we have to really pay attention to the FDOT and the rebuilding of the Howard Franklin Bridge, making sure that there's the, you know, light rail or other components to it, you know, kind of bolted into that rebuild, because it's really going to be, to make all of this work, it's only going to really work great if it's regional. So we really have to pay attention to what FDOT is doing right now as well.
Thank you. We have rebuttal.
And from the FDOT point of view, one of the things people should be aware of is a project that we're working on right now with Gandy, so that there will be an overpass over 4th and over MLK North, and that you will not have a red light signal until approximately Pinellas Park Mall. This is a project that I have been intimately involved with, and we've been a little derailed by a 10-inch hot oil eat line easement, but I'm sure we're going to get over it, so by the end of November, you'll be able to see that project fully funded by money from FDOT that we collected from all around the states of the surplus FDOT money.
Sharon Russ has a wildcard. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Kennedy. You mentioned that the transportation would help Midtown. How exactly would it help Midtown? Could you explain the demographics of that, the Greenlight Pinellas, and how it would actually help? Or how would it extend to Midtown?
I'm sorry. Sorry. That's a conversation offline, I'm sorry. Just be fair with everybody, unless you want to use a rebuttal card on that one.
Sure.
Go ahead. You have the last 30 seconds. You're in, 30 seconds.
One of the problems we have with Midtown is poverty. One of the ways to address poverty is employment. To get people back and forth from employment, mass transportation is important. Right now, if somebody had a job opportunity in Carolawn, or on the beaches, and they needed to get from Midtown to there, it would take them an hour to an hour and a half. If we get the Greenlight program together, they're going to be able to go there as quickly as if they had their own car. When you can get back and forth from jobs, you can then fight poverty in that way. It's not the sole solution, but transportation is the foundation of it.
Patiently waiting, Darden Rice to jump in.
I am the most knowledgeable and committed person in my race on mass transit. I support Greenlight Pinellas. My opponent has clearly stated she does not. I sit on the board of the PSTA, I'm a leader of Greenlight Pinellas, and I chair a legislative committee. And to address the Midtown issue as well, we know that Greenlight Pinellas referendum will mean a 65% increase in bus services, for starters. That means that we'll have a greater ridership, because people will be able to catch a bus every 15 minutes instead of every half an hour, an hour, even longer. And meanwhile, this will set up the funding to build light rail for the future, which our region desperately needs.
Thank you. I believe we have a rebuttal from Carolyn Fries.
Just to clarify, I am fully supportive of people having the vote, having a choice on Greenlight Pinellas, whether they want the sales tax or not. My personal choice, my vote will be against it. And also, with respect to Darden's PSTA board experience, maybe she should show up to a few more board meetings, because her attendance record is dismal, with only meeting one meeting during the time she's been there.
I think we have a rebuttal from Darden Rice.
You got your facts wrong on that, Carolyn. I have one of the better attendance records of any board member on PSTA. I have attended, like, almost all of the PTA general board meetings. I am the Chair of the Legislative Committee, so it's hard to have a meeting without me, and I have made every single Greenlight Council meeting. When I joined Greenlight Council, I asked the Executive Director to take me off the Planning Committee, and you used those absences to paint my entire record, and you're wrong, and it was a mischaracterization of my attendance and my fine service to PSTA.
Moving on to...
The attendance record stayed differently. You're wrong.
Moving on, this goes to Carolyn Fries. The topic is population density. Five apartment complexes are in some stage of development downtown that will yield several hundred new rental units, and the potential of close to 1,000 new residents. In your vision of the future of St. Petersburg, is this type of dense rental housing moving the downtown area in the right direction?
I mean, generally downtown areas are very dense, so yes, I think it does make sense. It makes more sense to have the people located close to where the work is, close where the shopping centers are. So I do think it's a great thing for our downtown area. So yes, I would say it's a good thing.
Thank you. Darden Rice, please.
Yeah, well, Pinellas County is built out, so it makes sense to cluster density, cluster population in greater density areas near downtown. I think it's great that we have more apartment buildings going in because it offers another range of level of housing for people to live in who can afford a really nice expensive condo downtown, or who may not be in the market to buy a house. So I think this will be helpful for students who go to USF St. Pete, who will have more places to find. And I think it's a great direction that the city's headed in, to cluster these housing developments and apartments near areas where people can easily access mass transit and bike lanes, and be close to bus stops that can get them to work, to hospitals, to universities, and to event areas, like a baseball game.
Thank you. We have a rebuttal here. Carl Nurse, please.
I should mention that of the complexes that are under construction downtown, two of them are mixed income, and so they are, one is affordable senior and the other one is family-oriented. And so the good news is that we're building an economic spectrum of housing downtown. St. Pete has, one of our Achilles' heel, is that we have a high concentration of obsolete housing. And frankly, we need to do a considerable amount of rebuilding, and that's going to really happen along corridors, and that's where the mass transit's going to happen.
Thank you. Sharon Russ would also like to use a rebuttal card.
Well, the issue with housing, Midtown has a grave issue with housing, more so than the rest of the city. Mr. Nurse talks that we talk about that we have slum housing and slum rentals. How do we, as a council, when we have so many people living in poverty in South St. Petersburg and substandard housing, yet we're using government funding and there's no improvement? Housing is very important to children having an effective way to live. So I hear all this talking, but how can the people in Midtown, how would they be able to move in some of these nice condos and be able to enjoy a better quality of life based on the amount of rent that we pay in that area, which is astronomical as compared to the rest of the city?
Thank you. This question now goes to Carl Nurse. The topic here is disconnected pearls in District Six. Over a week ago, a team from the National Urban Land Institute presented preliminary findings and recommendations on the future of St. Pete's waterfront. The PowerPoint can be found on the city's website. Part of that report focused on the tremendous potential of the areas adjacent to the port, running from Al Lang Field, around the Dali and Albert Witted Airport, inclusive of the USF College of Marine Sciences, USF St. Petersburg, including several scientific research enterprises, and a very large medical complex, including All Children's and Johns Hopkins Research and Bayfront Medical. In your vision of the future of the city, what role might this area play? What steps might the city explore to help, quote, "thread the many disconnected pearls into a beautiful necklace," to paraphrase one of the ULI members?
Well, the good news is that the medical and marine science cluster is really growing together quickly. In fact, within the last four weeks or so at City Council, we did a swap to allow all childrens to begin construction of their next building. I will say that I think we've been on the wrong track on the port for about the last 15 years. We've tried to make it a cruise port, a gambling ship port, and currently, for every dollar of revenue we get, we spend $5. At some point, you have to acknowledge, we have a dock, not a port, and that would save us a few hundred thousand dollars a year. I think the most critical thing, actually, we need to do to tie together downtown is what you and I think of as the approach to the pier, which is a parking lot. And if we could turn that into, that could be our biggest newest waterfront park, and it's actually surrounded by water on all sides. And so it could, to me, that's the greatest opportunity in terms of stringing things together.
Thank you. Sharon Russ.
I think that's a wonderful idea. Could you repeat the question again?
Sure. It has to do with the Urban Land Institute report on the future of the waterfront. And they identify that the port area has many disconnected pearls. And so really, the question was, in your vision of the city, what role does this area, this port area, have? And what steps might the city explore to help thread the pearls together?
Okay, I think the port area is a very important area. It's a good area for job creation, and it could be a very good avenue in order to create more jobs. I think our waterfronts are one of our most important assets, and I think if we take advantage of our ports and allow them to operate, you know, maybe connect with Tampa. And also, I think our waterfronts over in our district are very good, and I think that that's a great idea.
Thank you. Carl Nurse has the rebuttal card.
If I could just add one thing, the opportunity in the port, in my opinion, is to connect that to the marine science research that's going on. We need to be honest that if we're going to get NOAA or any of the other marine science researchers along that port, to use that port, which makes sense, it's not going to be a big moneymaker, but if we can stop calling it a port, we don't have to provide $200,000 a year of security there. So to me, converting that back into essentially marine science use for researchers has the thing that has the greatest opportunity to leverage jobs.
Thank you. Moving on to District Eight. This goes to Amy Foster, and the title, Neighborhood Associations. One of the hallmarks of St. Petersburg is its broad tapestry of vibrant neighborhoods with its each special personality. Some observers have highlighted what they fear to be a waning in both the support and the significance of some neighborhood associations, which for years have been a driving force behind strong, united neighborhoods. In your vision of St. Petersburg, how important are neighborhood associations, and what questions should we be asking, and what actions will you take in this regard?
Well, I think that neighborhood associations are very important. I've seen neighborhoods accomplish things that our government can't do alone. Certainly, there has been a decrease in the number of neighborhood associations over the previous years, and it's a constant conversation on the campaign trail with people. The resources aren't available, the funding for neighborhood partnership grants, and people frankly feel like they need more cross-agency collaboration. So back when they used to have neighborhood partnership teams where codes and your community police officer and other people were working together, you didn't have to explain the same situation over and over again because somebody was already aware of it. And I think we need to go back to that. I think it's also very clear it's a part of the values of our budget. Our budget does not reflect this as a value, and it's a very important part of our city.
Thank you. Steve Galvin, same question.
I've been a longtime member of our neighborhood association, and it's a little disheartening to see that the turnout is pretty sparse in ours. We have adjacent neighborhood associations like Historic Kenwood and Distant Heights. They have a much more involved citizenry there. And one of the things that I have done to try to alleviate that in our neighborhood was I designed door hangers for our neighborhood association that can be used over and over again to alert neighbors that we're having one coming up, that we only have four of them a year, so it's not one of those automatic, oh, it's the first Monday of the month, we're having a neighborhood association. I also believe that the neighborhood associations need to work with their adjacent neighborhood associations and have joint events. That was done successfully in our area recently, and I think that highlights for the neighborhood associations that aren't doing as well, how they could perhaps get greater participation in their own.
Thank you very much. We have a wild card from Lorraine Margeson.
Yes, we are in serious trouble in terms of the neighborhood association participation and linkage, and it's all coming from a lack of support from our city government. Our city, I actually, I am in District Two now, but I kind of got my start in civic volunteerism when I lived in District Eight, and I helped form the 34th Street Corridor Neighborhood Team. And we had great support from the city, and community policing needs to come back to the city in a real way. The community police officers linking with good, full city staff that could supplement what we wanted to do as citizens, we need help from City Hall. I'll help get there.
Thank you. And we're going to be sticking with you, Lorraine Margeson, and the topic here is one that you touched on earlier, and it's the fallout of flood insurance. What do you believe will be the short-term and the longer-term fallout to your constituents due to the recent changes in flood insurance premiums, known as the Bigger Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act? And what is in the realm of the possible, if anything, that city government can do to address this situation?
City government has to look at, you know, go back and look at stormwater redevelopment, or any projects that are dealing with water flow in the city right now. Whatever we had on the table, we need to start right at the beginning and look at what we can do to alleviate the situations for some neighborhoods. In other words, some portions of neighborhoods might have to have new drainage, new retention ponds, new all kinds of stuff to protect the rest of the housing stock around it. Of course, the state is looking at having their own, you know, kind of flood insurance or catastrophe insurance. That's an option that, you know, we can help support from the city level. And, you know, I think that is probably the only way we're going to, you know, combine, solve this problem to some extent, is see what we can do as a state to redo, you know, not be national flood insurance, but state flood insurance. And we're going to have to do a lot of infrastructure work, and it's going to cost a lot of money, and we have to start doing that right now.
Thank you. Jim Kennedy, same question.
The whole thing is based on elevation studies. And the result of that is, you're going to have the newer, bigger homes that are on the water not subject to this, because they've been built up. The homes that are going to have problems are the ones that are built in the 50s and 60s and 70s that are slab-on-grade, and their elevation is down. And what it's going to result in is people are going to be stuck in their homes because the value of that home is going to go down, or they're not going to be able to afford to be in their home because of the cost of insurance. Some of the things the city is doing to address the flooding, specifically in District Two, we have two projects that are in this year's capital fund. One is installing approximately 16 vaults in the Riviera Bay Neighborhood Association area. These are vaults similar to those that are in Shore Acres. The other is, we have a major drainage project happening on Ninth North, MLK North, in front of Barclay Estates and a little bit more to the north. So the city is taking those effects at this time.
Thank you. I think you have a wild card from Carl Nurse.
We don't really have the option of just letting this flood insurance change go through because 22% of our housing stock is affected by this. It will result in dramatic declines in values. And so our choice is, I don't believe Washington's going to help us on this, and they can't even keep the government going. Perhaps the state will help, but if the state doesn't help, we're going to have to set up a county flood insurance company. But more than that, we need to make sure that we directly connect what can we do to reduce risk with the cost of flood insurance.
Thank you. Moving now to District Four, this question goes to Darden Rice. Topic is curbside recycling. Do your constituents want mandatory curbside recycling? And if it is a money-losing proposition, do you believe that mandatory curbside recycling should be implemented?
Okay, it's not mandatory. It's called universal curbside recycling, which I strongly support. And St. Pete is the only major city in the state of Florida to have not figured out how to provide the service as part of its regular trash pickup services. So I'm on record for supporting a cost feasible solution. The city council voted unanimously to take a look at this and have staff bring back a proposal for how the city might do it. I think that St. Pete is capable of figuring this out, since we're the only city who's kind of behind the eight ball on this one. And just some real quick numbers, it costs $37 a ton to burn or landfill trash. We can get $40 to $120 per ton on the recyclables market. So even using conservative numbers, we could save $745,000 a year through a smart curbside recycling plan. Universal, not mandatory. Nobody's going to get fined if they don't recycle. And in fact, it's usually the opponents of curbside recycling that use that sneaky little word mandatory to try to make it unpopular.
Thank you. Carolyn Fries.
If you believe the polls, there was originally a poll taken that said 65% of the people wanted universal curbside recycling. There was another poll that went out shortly after that that introduced a small monthly fee for that. It was three or four dollars that was in there. And the support for it dropped to about 40%. So if you believe the polls again, then you would argue that people are not supportive of it if it's going to cost them more money. But if we can do it cost-effectively such that people's garbage bills don't go up, then yes, I would support it.
Thank you. Moving on now to District Six. This goes to Sharon Russ. Topic is chronic homeless. Four years ago, one of the leading conversations and concerns at election time focused on panhandling and homeless. Through a concerted and coordinated effort, along with legislative support, the concerns today are nowhere near where they were four years ago, but still the homeless remain a persistent presence, especially in and around Williams Park. What more, if anything, would you try to do to address the current issues of homelessness?
Well, I remember when homelessness was really an issue, when we had Tent City, and I volunteered for Tent City. I was in and out of those tents late at night, you know, trying to do whatever I could to help those people there. And in that process, I got involved with the Homeless Coalition, and I know that we could have done a lot better at that time when homelessness really was an issue in our city and the whole country was looking at the issue of homelessness. And I think the homeless has been probably moved to other areas. This is not an area that's really friendly to homeless people, but we have to look at our city and how we address rent. And because right now, I think we have some of the highest rent in the country based on what people make on average, medium income. It's hard to get your electricity cut on unless you have a big deposit. So I think if we instituted some type of rent control to where people can afford to live in this city, this city is, I think, is really going towards being a city that is for the prominent and the elite, and we forget about those people who basically are homeless because they don't even have a decent paying job. When you're working a $7-an-hour job and your rent is $1,000 a month, you're going to have a lot of homeless families and a lot of homeless people on our streets.
Carl Nurse, same question.
Reduction in the number of homeless, particularly in the downtown, has been an area where we've made considerable progress. But that's because we've had a social worker and a police officer on the street every day, trying to get folks into Safe Harbor or the other shelter. And the challenge, though, is that the folks who want to get off the streets, we've had some considerable success with. Where we have struggled is the folks who have mental health issues. And frankly, we have a desperate shortage of locations that take folks that have mental health issues. You know, there was, last week, there was somebody that was killed who had been in Baker Act eight times, you know, for three days, and then eventually was killed because he was unstable. And so the first thing we need to do is to seek state funding for additional mental health facilities. The other kind of homelessness is really a short-term emergency, usually from an economic reversal, and that's actually easier to handle.
Thank you. Darden, sure.
I think it's important to keep in mind what the real face of homelessness is. There's about 6,000 approximately homeless people in Pinellas County, and 38% of that number is children. So I think it's important to keep in mind, when we talk about homelessness, we're talking about providing the services to help get young mothers and their children back on their feet in safer places and getting people to jobs. And as far as Williams Park issue goes, we are working to move the buses from Williams Park, and then with, and that, I think, will do a lot to help that issue.
Thank you. Amy Foster?
Yes, I just want to address, Darden's actually right, 36% of the people in our county are women and children who are homeless. But to this question about the chronic homeless, as well as the issue in Williams Park, Carl is right, we have made considerable progress. However, most of it has been moved to District Eight. I've had business owners contact me on a regular basis about this issue, and they're sleeping on Central Avenue. Some of the issue is affordable housing. It takes 97 hours to, working a minimum wage job. And for a good return on investment, permanent supportive housing with a co-location of services is cheaper than jail, hospitals, or other options.
Thank you. Sharon Russ wanted to use a rebuttal card.
I just wish that we would have some very concrete ideas on what to do with homelessness. I think right now, we're sitting here, we're just talking, we're giving canned responses, we're talking about homeless women. But if you've never been there, and if you've never really been in if you've never really been in that situation, and you're coming, you're looking at downtown as a place to where you just don't want these type of people, or you want a certain demographic of people, then I think we're gonna continue to have this issue. Moving the bus system to another part of the town is not, it's just gonna move the homeless and the people, the unwanted people out of, out of sight, and out of sight and out of mind.
Thank you. Steve Galvin wanted to jump in.
A number of people have brought up Williams Park, and I'm also an advocate for Greenlight Pinellas, and I think that that'll make a huge difference in changing the complexion of Williams Park, as it will no longer be a hub for transportation downtown. I'd like to reclaim Williams Park and turn it into a family venue once again. I've floated the idea of putting a historic-type carousel in there, and we've got a band shell in place there. We could turn this into a family-friendly location with the squirt pad things, the kids run through and the water jets shoot up out of there, and just make it a place for kids again. Since we've closed the pier, there isn't any place for people to bring children downtown.
Thank you. Carolyn Fries would like to use.
Our state rep Kathleen Peters is actually working with the University of Tampa to create a truth-like campaign. If you remember the Truth Anti Smoking Campaign from years ago. She's working with the University of Tampa and another, a number of other supporters to put together a program to help educate people on the homeless issue, who these people are, and what the best way is to help them. So I look forward to being able to work with Kathleen on that and help promote the program, and, and I think that will definitely help make a difference as well.
Thank you very much. Moving now to District Eight, and with Steve Galvin, this question goes to you. The topic is future directions of the St. Petersburg Police Department. Police Chief Harmon is stepping down after 12 years of dedicated service as head of the city's police department. Are there strategic new directions the department should be considering moving forward within the context of this national search?
Well, I think one of the most important things we could do with our police department is create more of a satellite-type system. I know we desperately need to upgrade our headquarters downtown. It's, it's woefully outdated. But I think having satellite police stations in areas of the city that require them, there's a, there's an AMCOT vacating right on Thirty-Fourth Street that would be a great location for a substation to deal with our core of, of issues in our district. And I think that same approach could be used throughout the city so that people can have a relationship with their local police officers, develop a trust and a bond with the community. And I think it would go a long way towards bridging the communication between the police and the public.
Thank you very much. Amy Foster?
Yes, absolutely. I'm proud to have the support of our police officers as endorsers, and this is a great opportunity for our city. I think it's important that as we conduct this national search, that we also consider people who've been rising up through the ranks. I think it's important for us to look at predictive policing and data-driven decision-making, as well as a return to community policing. It's something that our citizens want very much. There are other options that we need to continue to focus on, including targeting hotspots and making sure that our officers have the appropriate training and resources that they need. We have a lot of rookie police officers right now, and we need to make sure that we're able to retain those.
Thank you. That was gonna be the last of the, the district-related questions. I didn't know if you wanted to use any of your rebuttal cards or remaining cards at this point, before we move to the final bonus question. Okay. Earlier in the evening, I put on your, the dais there, the following question. And again, this is an option. I'm a university professor, and students often ask for extra credit points. And this is purely an option. But here goes the question. The topic here is branding St. Petersburg. Branding is powerful. Imagine for a moment that the city had the funding for a 30-second TV spot during the next Super Bowl, designed specifically to establish a tagline brand for your vision of St. Petersburg. What would it say? For example, New York City has branded itself as "The City That Never Sleeps." Las Vegas has branded itself with "What Happens Here Stays Here." Can we approve upon Florida's Sunshine City or the Green Bench City? Would anybody like to take a stab? All right, here we go. First up, Jim Kennedy.
Where you want to be. And that could be you want to live here, play here, work here, vacation here.
Thank you. Amy Foster?
You know, I think the mayor answered this question the other night, and he had a good answer, that we're not your grandmother's St. Petersburg anymore. One of the things that makes our city great is our diversity. And I would like to use the tagline "Something for Everyone." We have arts, we have culture, we have shopping, we have the beaches. We're really a jewel. And in addition to that, I would say that my vision for the city as leadership is one city, one vision. We need to stop breaking things up by districts and neighborhoods and, and really come up with a cohesive plan for our entire city.
Thank you. Darden Rice?
I entered this race with a plan for the city, and my platform is called St. Pete Strong. So if the city would like to borrow that, we can discuss that. But my platform is, for St. Pete Strong, is, I think, really reflects what I think the most important things the city council should focus on. And that's strong jobs and economy, strong neighborhoods, and strong city services.
Thank you. Lorraine Margison had her hand up.
Sweet St. Pete. That's it. You wanted a tagline, not another platform explosion.
Okay, Carl Nurse?
My preference is surprising St. Pete. And I say that because St. Petersburg is so much better than, than the Green Bench City that we were. And I think it's an opportunity to show folks the diverse neighborhoods that we've got and a thriving downtown.
Thank you very much. Okay, Sharon?
My phrase would be, "St. Pete is a city where every child has a level playing field, and they're not considered commodities." Some of the phrases are for some people, that really works for some people. But, you know, for people in my district, we don't have the amenities. We don't see St. Pete as sweet. So I think we should work finally towards a city that is not a seamless city, not a lot of catchy phrase, but a city where every child has a level, level playing ground. And we're seen as a city that cares about people, that cares about children, because midtown is our future.
Thank you. Steve Galvin?
Actually, I think it was Requistman who said, "It's not your grandmother's St. Petersburg." There's a perception that St. Petersburg is, you know, God's waiting room. And our Democrat, demographics have changed significantly. We've got a much more youth-oriented, especially downtown. We've got a vibrant nightlife, which we didn't have a decade ago. It's a completely different place than the city that I moved to 10 years ago. And I think we need to let the world know that.
So what's the tagline?
Not your grandmother's St. Petersburg.
Carolyn Fries?
See, I'd probably need to go through some sort of exercise with a group of people to come up with a specific tagline, but I think it would have something to do with combination of the water and the arts here in St. Pete, because when we have friends from Europe visiting for, whether it's business or pleasure, the waterfront is something that they're always blown away by, and the, the amount of the arts that we have here, so.
Thank you all for playing. You all get five extra points on your midtermings. Brings us now to the 60-second closing statements. We'll begin with Lorraine Margison.
I have 20 years of volunteer advocacy experience at the local, county, and state level. I've run successful campaigns to both enact good legislation and kill bad legislation. My experience includes environmental policy expertise, public safety expertise, and strong neighborhoods expertise, as one of the volunteers who formed the Neighborhood Team approach while I served on the Thirty-Fourth Street Corridor City Team. I have a proven ability to build coalitions, to unite for a common cause, for the common good. St. Pete, you must decide, do you want a council member who listens to the people, or do you want to be saddled with "My Way or the Highway Kennedy" for the next four years? My opponent brags about his economic acumen while he consistently voted to waste $3.8 million of our taxpayer money, of our taxpayer money, in the face of over 40,000 signed petitions from two collection efforts against the failed lens. Yet, when it comes to the real needs for real people, he votes against the help, as he did in the People's Budget Review suggestions, for a measly $300,000. Vote Lorraine Margison November 5.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Kennedy?
Thank you. The reason that you should keep Kennedy on city council is my leadership, my experience, my accomplishments, my knowledge, and my endorsements that I've received. I have served as chair of city council. I have been chair of the Budget, Finance, and Taxation Committee for four years, chair of the Investment Oversight Committee for four years, and I'm serving in a leadership position on the Pinellas Planning Council, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the transportation that we've talked about. The endorsements that I've received are from the police, the fire, the Realtors, the Stonewall Democrats, Mayor, former Mayor Ulrich, Mayor Baker, and Mayor Foster. In a brief response to some of the inaccurate statements of my opponent, if you go back to the tape, I was basically the city council member who was saying, "We need to go forward, but we need to go forward cutting it in smaller pieces of economics." So don't be deceived by misrepresentations. Thank you.
Thank you. Darden Rice, you begin.
Great. I'm a longtime resident of St. Pete, been a homeowner for almost 20 years. And I love this city, and I'm very proud of my service on PSTA, the Charter Review Commission. I served as president of the League of Women Voters for three years. And I'm proud of my, my working as a core participant and founder of the People's Budget Review. There is a diverse coalition backing me in this race, from the working families represented by SCIU and our trade unions, to our public safety workers, the firefighters, and police, and groups who are known for working for and championing equality. The business community has scrutinized my background, my vision, and my plan. And the St. Pete Chamber of Commerce and the Pinellas Realtors have endorsed me as the business person in this race, not my opponent. I won the primary with 46 percent of the vote in a four-way tie, and looking forward to the citywide contest on November 5. I think it's notable that my opponent didn't win a single precinct, not even her own neighborhood.
Thank you. Carolyn Fries?
Well, thank you for tonight for coming out to hear all the candidates. As I've been saying since the very beginning, I've been living my platform of economic development, education, neighborhoods, and fiscal responsibility by starting technology companies here that create jobs and export products, by volunteering in the public schools that my four children attend, by serving as a Neighborhood Association president and a rotarian, and successfully managing the money at home, my businesses, and my volunteer activities. I'm the only candidate with over 20 years of experience in four of the seven industries that are targeted for high-wage job growth here in St. Pete. I've worked in manufacturing, information technology, marine and environmental sciences, medical technologies and life sciences. Because I understand these industries, I have the knowledge and experience to be able to recognize and identify opportunities, and make connections, and build a solid business case for relocation or expansion that will bring good jobs here to St. Petersburg. A vote for me is a vote for high-wage jobs, education, community, and service above self. I'm Carolyn Fries, a consensus builder by nature and a problem solver by training as an engineer, and I hope to earn your vote on or before November 5. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District Six, Sharon Russ begins.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you why I should be the next representative for District Six. District Six has, I've talked, I talk to the people a lot in my district, and I, I try to get input on how they're feeling and what they're feeling, so I can address you. District Six, at one time, was a minority-in-majority district. I didn't make those rules. I didn't make those laws. The city charter did, and our constitution did. And all of a sudden, in the middle of the game, we got thrown a loop. All of a sudden now, we're included in downtown. People are confused, because they're, we're faced with a CRA, a Community Area Development Area, a tax increment, and increment financing, and people just don't know. And through the history of St. Petersburg, we had Merle's Mercy, we had viable neighborhoods, Methodist Town. And we need to restore that. Right now, over the last six years, Mr. Nurse was appointed, we have the worst failing schools in St., in, in the country almost, with Merle's Elementary. So in order to
Thank you very much.
...make a difference, elect Sharon Russ, because she really is for us.
Carl Nurse?
Thank you for everyone for coming tonight. I would tell you that the, the reason the St. Pete Times called me the hardest-working man in local government was that I tried to not make a big wave, just get to work. And so in every neighborhood in the, in the district, I've worked to try to make a difference. That's the reason that in the district, 69 percent of the voters voted for me, winning more than
Chairman, dear.
Winning more than 50 percent in every single neighborhood. The changes I've tried to make are, you know, it's been uphill and all candor, but the good news is the economy is improving, and, and I believe we're gonna be able to pick up the pace in, in improving housing, in growing the number of jobs, and, and making our community safer. It's a big job, but it's also a big opportunity. And I would ask you to also mention that the Creative Loafing called me the best politician in, in the Bay Area. And so I have, I've, I've done my best. If you give me your vote, I'll, I'll continue to be the hardest-working man in local government. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to District Eight, Steve Galvin to begin.
Well, as you can tell by now, every candidate here wants the same things: safer neighborhoods, quality education for our youth, and a stronger economy brought about by increased job opportunity. I am the only candidate in my race that has already made a difference with all of those things in my neighborhood. Unlike my opponent, I own a home in St. Petersburg. I've demonstrated a commitment to my neighborhood by taking on four neglected or abandoned houses and doing all the work myself to renovate them. With families now living in them instead of drug dealers, the neighborhood is safer, and all the property values have increased. I'm ready for council so that I can improve the quality of life in all neighborhoods. I possess a broad range of business experience that will help me to decide the many diverse issues facing the city in the years ahead. My opponent is asking for your vote, but the records show she never voted in a municipal election until her name was on the ballot. You need a representative who is committed to the process and to the city, just like you are. The only endorsement that matters is your vote, and I would appreciate having it. I'm Steve Galvin. You'll find my name at the very end of your ballot. You can find out more about me and my proposals at Galvin, the number four, citycouncil.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Amy Foster?
I'm not surprised Mr. Galvin would choose to focus on me instead of the issues tonight. I won 56 percent of the vote in a four-way race by focusing on the issues that matter most to you. I'm endorsed by elected officials from both parties, both papers, the chamber, the Realtors, firefighters, and police, because I'm not the only one that thinks I'm the person with the skills to do this job. No council member can really know enough to do their job properly without first listening to the people. And if elected, you're going to see me actively reaching out to hear from you. The job of city council grows more complex every year. My extensive professional experience with multimillion-dollar budgets, business process improvements, building public-private partnerships, and grants distinguishes my candidacy. I'm not deterred by ambitious goals, the obstacles of bureaucracy, or partisan politics, and I'm gonna stay focused, issues, focused on the issues residents have told me matter most to them. But most importantly, you deserve a servant leader that is credible, trustworthy, and acts with integrity. My reputation proves that I'm that leader. I'm Amy Foster, and I'm asking for your vote on November 5.
Thank you all very much. Audience, if we could please acknowledge all of our candidates for tonight. If you would like to watch this forum begin in its entirety, you have several options. First, you can tune into St. Pete TV for replays. Go to the city's website at www.stpete.org, or watch it on the St. Pete TV YouTube channel. And in closing, I would like to thank our student volunteers and USF St. Petersburg and the staff and the city. Thank you very much. The staff and the city of St. Petersburg for helping to facilitate this forum here tonight. And good night from City Hall.